Call this meeting ordered, please silence your cell phones and your electronic devices and stand for the invitation given by council member Gere, please.
Council President, please follow me to Laura's chair, followed by the president's.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we give you the blessing of the Lord. Thee is the salvation, 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 and deliver us from sin.
For the pledge?
Pledge and intonation to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Communications?
Yes. We received a request for a holistic social gathering. It's a group meditation on Sunday, April 27th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in Centennial Park.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, that's fine.
We received a liquor license application for Game of Thrones in the city center. There was no objection from the police department on this.
Any questions or concerns on that?
I just asked why is the removal of the box check?
Can you be more specific where?
Right here at the top, see it?
I'm looking at what we do. For Game of Thrones, you're saying?
Yes.
It's a liquor license.
Unless they just signed the application and checked the box to the right bit. Yeah, that'd be my guess. I don't know why they would submit it if.
Because that's a state thing. We're just being notified. We don't really have any input other than unless there's a police contact with the applying agency that needs to be bared out because it's a body residence or a bad location for trouble or not.
I just didn't know if it was going to be a problem for them with the wrong box check.
Yeah, I didn't even see it. Haven't even noticed it.
Yeah, we can let them know for sure, and I don't know if removal means as they are moving locations.
That's what I was wondering too, but I didn't really know for sure.
I don't think we ever look at that section, so.
We need those.
We'll let them know.
Pay attention to detail.
We appreciate it, and they're going to appreciate it too if it was done in error.
Yeah, it could be an issue.
Yeah, because technically they're applying to be removed their license, okay?
Yeah, it happens a lot with the event applications too, where they check yes if they want, you know, street closures, and they meant to check no, which is checking the wrong side. So hopefully that's.
Good catch on that. I didn't even, I whizzed right through it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could check on that, maybe make sure we, just so they know, I mean, it's not really our application. And, uh, students?
And also received a liquor license application from Sunny's, and again, no objection from the police department on this one.
Any questions on that? Okay. Any others that, I don't have a list here, but sometimes they add.
Yep, nope, that's all for tonight.
The next city council meeting, they held Monday, April 20th, uh, it doesn't say what day. I got it, it's in my computer. April 28th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center, and Bob has something to mention about assessments.
Yes, today when I came home, I had communications from two different property owners. They said their assessments went up, they had serious concerns. They said their assessments were raised last year. One of the people wanted to know if we can expect now to have assessments raised every year. And I already talked to Rachel about it just before the meeting, so Rachel, can you clarify that?
Sure. No, I can't say that assessments will be raised every year. It's based on valuation of homes and sale prices. As I was just telling some council members, the New York Post just did an article on Saturday afternoon. Throughout the entire country, the hottest housing market in the entire country is Rochester, New York. Houses don't sit for more than 13 days in Rochester, New York. Number three is Buffalo, New York. So we are right inside that area. We've always had homes that are affordable, that people want to live in. So as they do come into, people come into our area and buy homes, values do tend to go up. But we do have a press release that will be issued, it's on your desk tomorrow morning or tonight to the media on paper, just letting everyone know that we strive to maintain 100% equalization, and that's the sale price to assessment ratio. We aim to keep our assessments at 100% full market value across all property types. And one thing when constituents come in and they ask, oh, my assessment is, let's say, $200,000, we always ask, well, would you sell your home at this, less or more? And they always say more. And so, again, we try with our assessor's office, it's completely independent, to have fair assessment values across the entire city. There is in anyone who got a change notice, this piece of paper that has explicit instructions on how to challenge your assessment. So I encourage everyone to take advantage of coming in, getting the market data that you can look at, look at the comparables for your property, and have an informal review prior to the final review with the city assessor's office. And then with the, let's see, the final review is the formal grievance in the city clerk's office. You can file anytime before May 29th. But I do encourage everyone to attend the informal review day and to come to the assessor to get all the information they need for comparables so they can see if there's any, any way they can lower the assessments. And as everyone knows, as assessments are spread out across all properties, that doesn't mean the tax rate will increase or that you will have an increase in taxes. This year, we lowered the tax rate, as everyone remembers, by 50 cents.
Rachel, it's also one thing, I've run into this repeatedly, where people think the council directs the assessor to go do a new assessment so we can get more money. A lot of people just don't want to accept the fact that the assessor's totally independent. We have no influence, we don't tell her what to do or him or.
Well, isn't this driven by the state though? Doesn't the state push for at least 98% or higher?
To stay at 100% valuation, yes. You, you want to stay at that percentage full market value, and that is driven by New York State.
I think one good exercise, and I did this today because my letters came in the mail. So I took my assessment rate in 2024 and I multiplied it by 896. And then I took my new assessed rate and I multiplied it by 846, and it was pretty static. So the taxes were maybe a $2 or $3 lower than what I paid in 2024.
So 896 was last year's tax rate, what you're saying?
Yes.
And 849 was this year's tax rate?
Yeah, last year's tax rate with last year's assessed value. And then this year's tax rate, which went down 50 cents, with the new assessed value, that went up. But it was still flat. Mine only went up like 5,000 and 10,000, so it kind of stayed flat. If you went up more than that, I would assume you'd pay a little more.
That was your assessment that went up, not your taxes.
The assessed.
Right.
So I did take a look at that. That was the first thing I looked at. So I encourage everybody to do that because I think it's just a good exercise.
Right.
And just a reminder, your city tax, again, is only 25% of your total tax bill. County is the other 25%, roughly, and school taxes are the other 50%. So I know everyone likes to come in here and talk about their taxes, but we are only 25% of your entire bill. And I think council, with our budgeting process, continues to work as hard as they can to provide the services that our residents want and enjoy at the lowest cost possible.
Any other questions or concerns on that? Tonight, we have a proclamation for emergency services dispatch. Frank, if you'd like to come up?
I have lots.
Frank, come in here, yeah?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, you ready? Here we go. All right. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, they require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Genesee County Emergency Dispatch Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each emergency dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Batavia recognizes the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and sincerely thank the members of the Genesee County Emergency Dispatch Center for their diligence and professionalism to keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you, Assistant. Would you like to make a statement?
Sure. On behalf of the men and women of the Genesee County Emergency Services Dispatch Center, I'd like to thank city council for this recognition. Dispatching is a very tough job, and often they don't receive a lot of recognition. Generally, in the media, the only time is this week, and if they make a mistake. Thankfully, that's few and far between. I lead a great team. I can't say enough about them. And they do a fabulous job. I was just talking to the city manager. I travel around the state, and unfortunately, the working relationship that we have here, which is excellent, is not seen everywhere around the state and country. So on behalf of the men and women of the dispatch center, I do want to extend my appreciation, not just to city council, but also all the city agencies that we interact with, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Babe has a presentation to make?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And we have children on here tonight to a piano. I would love to help you hand them out. I don't think we need the projector so you could stay in your seats.
No.
It's okay. Just so council knows, the swearing in of Officer Ritzinger, he couldn't make it today.
It's not possible.
So it's postponed to the next meeting. It's on the agenda, but it's not for me.
My name.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Shannon, you can present from wherever you want. Take it away.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Come up to this chair. Oh, right here.
All right in front of the camera.
Awesome.
Good evening. Okay, so what you have in front of you is a PowerPoint on open container in the bid. In the pocket, you will see my talking points. And then the second page will just coincide the bullet points that I will be making in the PowerPoint. So it's just easy to follow along. So I would like to just start off by talking about the talking points of YI in here. So we are talking about open container in the bid. We would like to call it the social district, but it would be the same footprint of the bid. So the talking points tonight would be, the open container would drive economic growth, increase foot traffic, more sales for bars, restaurants, and shops, encourages patrons to explore and spend more time downtown, fosters in welcoming downtown culture. Open container districts create a fun, festival-like atmosphere, supporting a sense of community and vibrancy. Supports events and placemaking, makes it easier to host public events, live music, outdoor markets, while boosting attendance. Attracts visitors and retains talent. Adds to the downtown's appeal for young professionals, tourists, and new businesses. The, probably my favorite part of it, safe, managed consumption, controlled boundaries and rules promote responsible public drinking, making it safer and easier to monitor than impromptu consumption.
And I'll interrupt. The bid board has talked about this for the better half of the last year. They came to city council asking for special permission to have open container in Jackson Square back in the spring of 2023, and as well as having council approve open containers for certain events that the bid was hosting. And I don't want to speak for the police chief, but I have gotten reports that there have not been any issues during these times or events. So after the board did their research and worked with Shannon, it brought them to the point tonight where they'd like to ask city council to review the proposal for open container in the entire district. So sorry to interrupt, but.
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Just give you the background.
Thank you. Yes, we have spoke at length with the police, and it was all positive feedback. They said there has never been an issue. They have no concerns. And they think that it is a positive thing for Batavia. Those are the police that I spoke with. I won't mention any names. So we took this to the board, and they voted to move forward with this. So this is something that all the downtown businesses would like to have in the downtown. So we have the map of the bid. So that would be, that would be what we would like to call the social district. So that way, we're not doing any more boundaries. We're not changing anything. It is literally just going to be the bid district. Okay, so the social district success stories, we have kind of stolen this from East Aurora, Evans, Lake Shore, Lancaster is fairly new, and Oswego is fairly new. The mayor reports from Oswego, all positive feedback. And the most important thing about that was the new businesses that it brought downtown. I know I'm skipping around. And the same is Lancaster. They really felt that it brought in people into their little community, and it's thriving now with the building new businesses. And let's skip right ahead to the benefits. Now, if you look at the picture that is attached to those benefits, that is what it looks like every event that we have. And that is fantastic. So I get by doing open container, we're not going to have, you know, the 650 people. But how great does that look to walk downtown and see all these people? Okay, so open container policies, social district allows individuals to process and consume alcoholic beverages in designated outdoor areas, typically within the defined downtown or commercial zone. This setup offers several key benefits for the community, especially in revitalized or developing downtowns, which definitely speaks to our downtown. So this for businesses in the PowerPoint. Boost local business, increase foot traffic. People are more likely to linger, stroll, explore local shops, restaurants, and entertainment venues. Encourages bar and restaurant sales. Patrons can buy drinks to go. Reduces congestion inside venues and allows for greater capcity. Spurs impulse spending. As people wander with drinks, they're more likely to pop into shops and grab a little bite to eat. Two, attracts tourism and young professionals. Visitors and locals alike are drawn to destinations that feel progressive, fun, and accommodating. Accommodating qualities, open container zones promote. I pause for a minute. But enhances community atmosphere, absolutely. It creates a vibrant, festival-like feel. Open container zones often lead to a lively, welcoming downtown vibe that encourages socializing and return visits. That is something that is really important to us. We might bring them down once for one of our events, but are they going to come back? So we want to offer as much as we can to the people coming in from out of town. Supports, supports events and placemaking, enhances concerts, markets, and festivals by making them more flexible and attractive to a broader audience. I'm going to skip four because at the moment, it doesn't really apply. Eventually, hopefully, it will, but right now, I think we're utilizing all the space in the downtown. Five, safety and oversight. When managed well, open container districts can reduce binge drinking and overconsumption by normalizing moderate drinking in public. It often, it's often easier to monitor behavior in a defined district than in, district than inside crowded venues. So I think that screams volumes, and I do agree with that. And that is why when we do the cider walk, the wine walk, the beer walk, we go for open container, we find that people will slow, slowly sip their drink instead of, I'm going to the next stop, I can't bring it outside, I'm going to drink it as fast as I can to get to the next stop. This gets rid of all of that. And I know everyone here has seen that, even when you go out, you know, I'm at Eli Fish, and everyone's like, hey, let's go to TF's, right? Hold on, let me, let me drink this really fast. You know what I mean? Let me hurry up and drink it. There'll be no more of that. You will just be able to take your time, enjoy your drink, and stop along other shops along the way as you're going to the other bars, restaurants, and so forth. We, so the boundaries we did discuss. This way, if we keep it in the bid district, then if new businesses come in, we don't have to change any of the boundaries because maybe they're outside of, you know, our two-block area where all the restaurants are. So this, if someone is two blocks over and wants to open a bar or restaurant, they're already in the bid, the bid district, they're already in the social district. We don't have to change any boundaries. Okay, so we would, we're looking into preferred drinks in a marked container. So we do not want glass. We don't want people leaving with the glasses from the bars and restaurants. So we are looking into plastic containers that will be logoed with the bid logo, and that would let everybody know that they can go walk around with that cup. So that is going to be the preferred. We would like to avoid all glass out in public. The days of the week, we would like seven days a week. And we're just asking 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Keep it easy, simple. And it would be all year round. Businesses, business participants would be any bars and restaurants with liquor license, liquor license in the bid can participate. Signage, district signage will be maintained by the bid. Partnership, all local bid businesses and public safety. Next step, city council, consider local law change. We'd like to call it lift the ban and change it to allow for open container. And hopefully, schedule it for the next public hearing. Thank you. Yeah.
This handout, you know, is really nice. You job on it. And I'm all for the container policy, but the only question I have is what about garbage or trash? Is there going to be recycling outside if we're walking around, or how's that?
So we do have, and I'll speak for Tom, and you can jump in. We do have garbage cans throughout the downtown that are picked up once or twice a week during the summer, sometimes more if businesses call and say they're, they're full. So we would hope that people would be respectful to use those outside containers to put their cups and other garbage and debris in.
Thank you.
How does the liquor license apply when I go to TF Brown's and I walk in with a beverage from another location? Is that going to be allowed? Because I think during the bid, or the wine walks and beer table, you had to move them outside the premise, and they did their sampling outside, not actually inside TF Brown's, it would have to be out in front. So how would that apply if I just go? Is that going to be any violation of New York State law?
So for the special events, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, the folks who already have liquor license set up outside because it's a fundraiser for the bid district. Because this isn't a fundraiser for the bid district, I could, as far as I understand it, purchase a beverage at Matt Gray's Bar, and I could drink part of it, walk out the back door and go over to Elise's with that same beverage, and then get another one there and walk to the store or to a restaurant. So there would be, as long as you're consuming it within the district and/or whatever shop you go into, it's totally legal. And it is a local law change. City attorney couldn't be here tonight, but we've reviewed it. It's basically adding a sentence to say that in the bid district, open container would be allowed with the parameters that city council, if they so choose to move forward, would set. And that would go through the entire process of a local law change.
Are these like disposable cups?
Yes.
So they're not, somebody couldn't keep one and then just pour their own beverage in it?
So they could. So just to be clear, we don't want our officers, and Sean, step in at any time here. If it's open container, it's open container. We would prefer that they utilize the cups that bid would provide to all the restaurants. But if they just had a Yeti with something in it, it would still be open container. If they had a six-pack of cans of natural ice, it's still allowed.
So essentially, Rachel, all we're doing here, same rules and regulations, we're just expanding it to include.
Outside of Jackson Square to the entire bid district.
I would like to see mandatory no-glass containers.
And that can be written in the law.
And marked drinks and marked cups.
Well, let Sean weigh in on the marked cups.
Well, as we discussed this earlier, I don't disagree with that. The problem is going to be policing it, and quite honestly, my officers are stretched as it is right now. And I would not be able to expect them to police that on a regular basis. So to the manager's point, if somebody has a natty ice, as long as it's not a glass container, we're probably not going to allow it. But if they have a glass container, and there specifically says in the, in the VMC that there's no glass, we would, we would address that situation.
Or if they're outside of the hours as well.
And you mentioned the hours, so.
Or outside of the district.
Or outside of the district, yes. Then it's.
Yeah, I have a question. I can't make out what the color coding of the chart is here. So when you say you can allow alcohol in the bid, is that the entire area? So we're going to, we're going to allow alcohol in city-owned property, no? Parking lots? I'm thinking a couple things here. And also in Austin Park, we're going to allow alcohol in the park?
You certainly could put different sections of it, but I don't know that Austin Park is actually in the bid, is it?
In the bid.
Technically, it is. You could certainly carve Austin Park out.
But under service laws, right? I mean, we don't ban alcohol in the parks.
Correct. If they rent a pavilion, they can have it.
Yeah, there's a procedure there. I mean, you can't just go walk around the park like a bear. You have to rent a pavilion. The city knows that you're going to be there doing.
Again, council could give direction if they were willing to go forward with this to exclude Austin Park.
It might have concerns, pardon, but it's just liability to the taxpayers.
So this doesn't give anyone the right to do stupid things. All this is doing is letting you walk around socially with a drink. We're not, this shouldn't attract any people who are going to be falling down drunk or causing problems because it hasn't so far at any of the walks, and it hasn't in the square. So the same laws would apply. There's still no drinking and driving. There's still no, you cannot be drunk in public. So this, it's, all we are saying is there's nothing wrong with someone buying a drink, being responsible, and saying, hey, let's go shopping, let's go to the next place. And like we said, what it's going to do is going to slow down your drinking instead of you rushing to drink. I think this actually is more responsible. I don't think people are going to do more than they already do. I think that people already do it and already have it in their cups, and it's just probably not noticed. But I mean, as for that stuff, I don't think that you're going to prevent most of it. There's always going to be people who are going to push the boundaries, but that's why we have these rules and regulations.
Well, then this would also, you wouldn't have to come to us for your events that would already be in place. And the first time that we did the open containers waiver, I noticed immediately. I noticed immediately that that slamming of drinks before you left the sample location ended. These people then went in, got their drink, stood out in front and didn't crowd all inside a small space because they wanted to finish their drinking. They didn't want to drink it quickly. So that was one of the first things I noticed when we did that, that was a positive outcome.
Yes, that was, that is 100% accurate. That is exactly what we had seen. And from the businesses themselves, we actually said with all that they were doing is trying to get from one place to the other and drinking it. Well, now that they can slow down and they can walk outside, we're looking into even with the sidewalk sales and just, just trying to get more people out and about and just slowing things down and just basically we're calling it, you know, socializing and sipping. Sorry.
How does the bid general population feel about this, they're on the board? The board is at least, or?
We have not had, so we sent this out to everybody and I have not had one person come back with anything negative. Everyone was for it.
Well, it's your district, if it's what the members of the district want, I think I'm willing to consider it. I'd like to see it written up with more specifics. I mean, this is the early stage at this point.
Right, I'm looking for council to say, Rachel, George, who's not here tonight, go back, write this in to our local BMC code. Give us, give that to us at the next meeting and then we'll move forward from that there. Yeah, if.
Officially discuss it then.
Yep, we discuss it and then it would go through the four-meeting stage, including a public hearing as well. If you guys were open to seeing it move forward.
Is it possible, or maybe it's not, I'm just going to ask the question. Can the county building and the courthouse and the park be taken out of the bid district? Why is it even in there?
So this can be written, anyway council would like it. If they'd like the boundary modified in any way, shape, or form to exclude the parkland or the county building, you certainly could.
Because they're not really, you know.
Yeah, I, we can't amend the bid district without going through a whole nother local law change to amend the district. But if you want to exclude certain areas in this local law, you can give me direction to do that.
I think the county already has a policy to allow county property or county property.
So if we cut it off at Corden Jefferson, you know, to this way and not going to those pieces there, you'd eliminate the park and all that county.
And if there was an event in the park, you would rent the pavilion and you could have your alcohol there anyway. You wouldn't need a special request from council to change anything because you're in the park. It's already a state pavilion, I don't think they want. People could be walking around drinking. It would be in the event application and we'd figure it out.
My question too is what, was the response for it? Did 100% of the bid members respond, 50%?
I, I wouldn't, I don't know about percentage, but the, I do know that the, I didn't have any negative feedback. So the people who, the percentage of the people who got back to me was 100% pos, positive for it. I, I don't know, I don't have percentages of.
Well, this will give us time, I mean, we're going to be four meetings worth of chance to let us know how the public feels about it and so on, right?
Well, I can say there's a lot of members of the business district here tonight.
Yes.
In the audience, while they didn't sign up to speak, um, they are here, as far as I'm aware, in support of this.
Yes.
Many local businesses, not just restaurants as well, came to support Shannon's presentation and this opportunity.
Yeah, okay, so I support, I support anything you want to do. It's your district and you are the neighbors that have to live with this law. It's not going to affect people on a side street in a residential area. It's only going to affect you and your businesses. So that's where we'll start getting the feedback, when this becomes public today. And then we start going through, put it on a conference meeting, then we'll have, the public will have a chance to weigh in and those business owners can weigh in as well. And we'll go through the, it'll be at least a four-meeting process.
And I've started asking some of my friends that, you know, go to Eli Fish or go to Romans or go to some of these other businesses to have dinner or drink, and they were all, wow, that would be great. So I haven't had one negative feedback. I haven't mentioned or two about what you think of this, um.
And I wouldn't be here, this, this isn't something that I'm driving. This is something that the businesses have asked me to do, so that, that is why I'm here, so.
And to be fair, they asked in 2023.
They did.
And Eric and I said, "Let's try."
Jackson Square.
Jackson Square first. Let's try to see how that works. Let's see if there's any issues with opening a portion up. And there wasn't. And so we had another discussion and said, "Okay, let's come back with a presentation." You did a very nice job, um, bringing it to city council for further thoughts and ideas. And if you guys direct me, I'll go and work with George to write up the local law.
So at this point, is council in approval to direct the city manager to research this farther?
Yes.
The other question, if you could ask George, if you can find this out, find out why we have an open container law in the first place. Was there a problem? Was there an issue? Was it a long time ago where it was done during prohibition and never changed? I don't know. I mean, this would be interesting to find out because it's been in effect for as long as I can remember and I've lived here for many years. So it's always been a thing. So I don't know why it has. So it'd be nice to know the history behind it if we could, if we could find that out. Just so we don't make a mistake again that was corrected once before and now we open it up again and it's a problem.
Maybe our historian, Ryan Duffy, could shed some light on that.
Wherever you can find the information.
Thank you, Krista.
Wherever you can find the information, I'd be really interested to know how we came across him and helped with the law in the first place. Anything else? Does that give you what you need, Rachel, as far as?
It does, yes. So what I will do is with the feedback you've given me thus far and any emails you'd like to send me, the starting of the drafting of the local law process will begin. We'll get it on the next conference meeting. Um, again, it can make changes all the way up to and after the public hearing. So this, this is not a fast process, um, but it could be done within a month or so of the next conference meeting at the end of April, just in time for the summer season.
Yes, and we will be working within the bid to educate all the businesses to let, to go over all the rules, all the regulations. Uh, we will be really focusing on marketing it to the public, so the public will know all the rules and regulations. We did not come into this lightly. We have done a lot of the research and I think, I think it's a very positive and thank you for listening to my presentation.
And I think it'll be more specific when we see it officially written up with those rules. And then we can see if they apply or if it's too many or not enough. So we got to cover what we believe to be on the basis, so we don't forget something or create a problem with something. Then we'd have to go back and correct it. So let's try to get it right the first time if we're going to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah, seeing as we're directing the staff to go ahead and do something, shouldn't we actually take a vote?
No.
Normally George asks us to vote if we do something.
No, I, I don't believe that's true. I, I believe she's going to start the process and put it on a conference meeting. When it hits the conference meeting, then it'll be officially considered in front of council and then it will go through the process. Right now, it's more of a request.
Direction.
I thought, Rachel, didn't you want to do something more than that though?
No, at this point, I have the local law drafted. I'm going to amend it per your suggestions, um, get it to the attorney and then bring it forward to council for consideration.
Yeah, it has to be on a conference meeting, it has to be thoroughly discussed.
If we vote now, it'd help you move, you know.
It wouldn't hurt to.
No, if we vote now, then we've eliminated the public input. Okay, so let's just go through the process. So put it on the next conference meeting when you're ready and we'll start from there.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
90-plus cash award recipient?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Um, I wanted to bring attention specifically to Heidi tonight and all of her hard work she does for the city of Batavia. Um, she is a recipient of the prestigious 90-plus Cash Fest Award for 2024. She's showing the plaque right now. The award signifies excellence in the implementation of management of all liquidity in the public and higher ed marketplace. It's not based on what the marketplace is paying back in dividends or interest for cash, but how our city's employees operate within the qualifying areas below. So Heidi works really hard, um, to make sure that every single dollar of public money that can be invested and gain return is invested and gains that return. Those monies that we don't need on a day-to-day basis to pay our operating fees. She works hard on liquid proficiency, the WORN RIC rate indicator, cash flow optimization, and we have great investment policies and practices. So I know city council brought three plus one on in roughly 2019. And since we've done so, we've been extremely successful in managing our cash and our investments, um, to the best of our abilities for those public dollars. So Heidi, congratulations and thanks for all your hard work.
You going to hang that up in your office?
It comes to the little stand, so we'll figure out someplace, someplace to put it. Um, I just wanted to say real quick, it, it does measure how well we do with our money. Like Rachel said, it measures these five areas, um, percentage of available funds providing value. Uh, when I looked on their website, 99.6% of balances either directly earn interest or are offsetting bank fees. So we have very little money that's just doing nothing. Uh, the liquid proficiency is how well we do with liquid assets that are easily convertible. If a combination of fixed income, which are CDs or CDARS, and high-yield savings accounts. So if it's not invested in a CD, it is at least in a high-interest savings account. And even some of our checking accounts have smaller interest as well. The WORNIC rate indicator that she mentioned measures the rate on all cash that's earning interest. Um, the city's accounts were yielding an average of 4.54%, which exceeds the 30-day US Treasury note, uh, sorry, Treasury rate, which was 4.43. So we were able to invest, um, a lot of our money at longer periods of time. So when the rates started dropping, we were still at much higher, um, interest rates for that cash. Cash flow optimization was, um, the use of our checks via ACH and wire. Uh, we get a better score if we use ACH and wire because it's just less costly. Um, and then again, the investment policy practices, which you guys approve every year for us, they just make sure that our investment policy includes everything that is necessary to, um, help us earn a good grade. So, um, we're very proud of being able to get a 90-plus for the four quarters of 2024. I think they have a 95-plus, which we'll strive for probably next year. And of course, Lisa Neri also helps me a great deal with, um, getting all this stuff. But we're excited to get this, the mail. We like to share good news every now and then, so just wanted to make sure you guys were.
Well, and if I remember correctly, we talked about this back in January. You said that since we've used this company, we've really maximized our earnings, which has been helpful to keep a lot of the city functions going without having to raise taxes, so.
Yeah, we've earned.
Making our money, earn money for ourselves is, is a good thing, so. Good work on that, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for? Okay, MOU with the Tennessee County Sheriff, District Attorney, probation, YWCA, Strive Grant Program?
Thank you, Council President, members of council. The city of Batavia was chosen to participate in a multi-agency effort funded by a state grant to better affect outcomes of victims of domestic violence or intimate partner violence. The MOU solidifies the responsibilities of each party under the grant terms. The city of Batavia will lead all coordinated community response among the partners. The city will implement evidence-based lethality assessment tools, implement problem-oriented policing strategies to address partner violence and advocate survivor outreach and referrals as well as tracking all data. I'll turn it over to Chief if he has anything to add for the MOU.
Yeah, I would just add that the agencies that we will be partnering with, Rachel listed those out. It is required as part of the grant process that we enter into an MOU. Otherwise, the state will not release that money. All this MOU states is what we already do today. There's really no enhancements to this, other than it solidifies what we are currently doing and requires us to all come to the table together, um, to, um, address these issues as a, as a group.
And with the state grant program, we will get funding for a coordinator to also, um, help with this effort, so it won't fall on individual officers as it does now. There'll be a coordinated response with one single person, which we think will have better outcomes for victims.
Yes, and the only question I had, which I talked to Sean prior to the meeting about, it was, the YWCA as part of this agreement is to provide shelter and services. And, um, I asked, what about male victims? Whether it's same-sex intimate relationships or, you know, the male's not the aggressor in the occasional situation. Uh, and he assured me that in the last several years, they've made, made great progress in that direction and that they are helping and staying neutral and helping both sides, whether it be providing shelter or a place to shelter. That you're, you're, you assured me the YW now is not tailored more towards a female victim, but towards all victims that may occur in these situations.
Yeah, that's right. The YW has been a great, great partner, um, throughout this process. We're happy to be on board with them. Uh, we, you know, we have a lot to learn from each other throughout this process. We've already learned a lot and there are gaps that have been identified. And the coordinator position that Rachel had mentioned will help us fill those gaps. Uh, but yes, they've been a great partner to work with and I, I see nothing but good things together in the future.
I agree. Yeah, are they providing shelter now?
Yes, they are, they're required to.
Anyone else? So, uh, in this case, are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Uh, that's not tonight's meeting, right? That's going to go to the next business meeting?
No, we wanted to give you time because it was an MOU. Um, it will, there'll be a special business meeting at the next meeting.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yep, thank you.
So are we in consensus to move that to another business meeting in the future?
Yep.
City Center Concourse Revitalization, Seeker?
Yes, the City Center Concourse Project, partially funded by Empire State Development, will upgrade the interior of the concourse with flooring, painting, lighting, public restrooms, as well as the interior ceiling improvements. All the wires up there, rusty ceiling will get painted. After completing the Seeker review, I recommend that city council declare itself lead agency and adopt a negative declaration under Seeker. All of these improvements will be existing conditions, so there will be no, um, effect under Seeker.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? That gets moved. Williams Park Revitalization Project, Seeker?
Thank you, Council President. And I do request that this move to tonight's business meeting due to timing of the grant. Um, Williams Park, the city had the opportunity to apply for a New York State Parks Grant for up to a million dollars to improve the park. Currently, the park has picnic pavilions, playground, baseball fields, a multi-use court, floor hockey court, tennis courts, and a walking trail. Um, the city did put out a very brief, uh, five-day citizen survey. It was opened specifically for one week and 126 people responded, which I thought was amazing. 60% of residents use parks once a week or more. 67% of respondents use Williams Park specifically. 47% use Centennial Park and 30% Austin Park. 66% of citizens would like more walking trails. 61% would like updated playgrounds and 45% would like to see additional spray parks. With this in mind, the city will prepare with your blessing tonight, an application under Seeker, and find that the proposed action will not result in significant adverse impacts on the environment. The proposed action would be upgrading the baseball field fences, redoing sports courts, and also revitalizing the playground with new equipment. So there is two resolutions before you. One is to declare yourself lead agency under Seeker and find for a negative declaration. And the second is to apply for the grant.
Questions or concerns?
If we could just abort, abort this grant, it would be nice here saying that Austin Park and Williams could be upgraded in the next few years.
Yes, so Austin Park, as you're aware, we're still waiting on the state legislature for the alienation. Um, and it's funny you say that because just looking at some of the strategies council has put in place with the budget book, a park's master plan is something I'd like to look at in the summer and bring back a proposal for council to consider after our audit is finished. finished and we see how the year shapes out, because our parks need a lot of love.
Yes, yes.
And they're used often, frequently. Our residents really do enjoy them, and they certainly deserve new amenities at those parks.
Yes, one way. Thank you.
Williams Park is the only park really on the west end of town. I mean, there's some in the north, but Kimby's actually considered the south side. So when you get past Oak Street, there's really nothing there other than Williams Park. So that serves pretty much the whole half of that city over there.
Yeah, and I know, I mean, speaking personally.
You have the school places, you have the ball fields and the, you know, over on Union Street. Those are school properties, they're not really public parks.
Right. I know we drive, when my kids were little, out to use Williams Park all the time, because it was a great open space.
It's our largest, probably one of our largest.
Yeah, and it was just a nice place to go to. So our residents do use our parks, and they do need some love, so we want to do everything we can with grant applications to try to make investments in them.
So are we in consensus to move the seeker and the actual grant application to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Linear crossing license with Genesee Mohawk Valley?
Yep. Thank you, Council President, members of council. I'll address the last two resolutions we would like move forward tonight. We have already approved these under a different name. We approved them under Genesee Valley Railroad, I believe, Tom. And this is to cross the Walnut and Cohocton Water Line on Walnut Street through the rail line or underneath the rail line. They were approved under the wrong name, so we need to bring them back so they can be executed under the correct name, and the project can continue. We have onsite construction going on right now with the water line on Walnut. There has been traffic delays, I'm sure citizens have noticed. But we need to get these through with the correct name and have them re-executed by the council president and the representatives from Genesee Mohawk Railroad.
So are we in consensus to move those to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Vili, second to die, Mr. Richmond, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone need a break or anything while between meetings? Okay, I now call to order the regular business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the February 2025 financials. Do you have any questions or concerns with those? Any additions, omissions, or any questions? So are we all in consensus to approve those February financials? Okay, those are approved. This way to the future. Okay. What's that? Okay, you've all been given a copy of the March 2025 minutes. I believe there's two meetings there, if I read them correctly. Any questions or concerns on those? Any omissions, additions? So are we in consensus to approve the March 2025 minutes? Okay, those can approve. We have several agenda items today. We'll start with 502025, the K-9 Foundation for the Purchase of a K-9. Mr. Bayakowski. Fifty-one 2025, the New York State Burn Grant for Police Vehicles. Mr. McGinnis. Fifty-two 2025, the Public Works Supervisor and amend the 2526 budget. Mr. Richmond. Fifty-three 2025, Clerk Typus to be amended to discovery clerk. Ms. Briggs. Fifty-four 2025, the public hearing for the residency requirement that we recently talked about. Mr. Twichell. Fifty-five 2025, the Keeler Construction for the Bank Street and Alba Place Streetscape Plan. Fifty-six 2025, the seeker for Williams Park. Ms. Schmidt. Fifty-seven 2025, the New York State Parks Grant for Williams Park, I believe. Mr. McGinnis. Fifty-eight 2025, the linear license agreement with Genesee Valley Mohawk. Mr. Richmond. And fifty-nine 2025, the crossing license with the same arrow, Mr. Vili. City Attorney is not here today, so I don't believe he'll be making a report. City Manager, would you like to make a report?
I don't have anything else to update council on at this time.
Okay, any questions for the City Manager? Recent events or anything? Go ahead.
Rachel, how are we coming along with separating the land from the Brisbane Mansion?
So, yes, the bill has been introduced, and it is now, and I believe, local government's committee. We've had correspondence with the Assembly Minority Attorneys, who are working with the Assembly Majority Attorneys, so they're able to answer any questions when it comes forward. The expectation is that in the last few days of session, at the end of June, the bill will be then considered and hopefully passed, so we have the alienation. But they gotta get through the budget first before they take up any, any other bills, and especially local bills with Home Rule.
I know the process has been a quiet one, going through all deeds and everything else. Gotta give George a lot of credit for that.
Sure.
As we're moving along, particularly since the police department's coming up. I'm looking forward for that to open. I'm looking forward to get that Brisbane Mansion taken care of, get people coming in. And now, hard the city is working to get businesses in there, get ideas, get it back on the tax rolls.
So I will say, we did have a very positive developer's walkthrough. There was four different developers that came to the walkthrough. Some developers have come back with construction crews to try to get their pricing in order to see if it's a viable project for them. So we hope to have an update late June, July, on how the RFP turns out. And as a reminder, council's all invited to tour the interior of the police station. It is a private tour, no media, I'm sorry, tomorrow at 3:00 PM, if you can make it. Sean, 3:00 PM?
Three thirty.
Three thirty, three thirty PM.
And Rachel, just a note, if I recall correctly, you mentioned back before the construction even started, that you wanted to get started on repurposing the Brisbane Mansion. So it's a good thing we started back then, because who knew that all this was gonna turn into a complicated mess to separate the building from the actual park property and so on.
Right.
So it's a good thing we were proactive in starting it way early, so it'll probably just work out to be just about on time, with one thing coming through about the same time that we're ready to move out of the building, so.
That would certainly be fortuitous, and that would be great if the timing aligned. I definitely like the idea of getting ahead of projects like this, and council's commitment to find reuse of buildings that we no longer need.
Right. And it's.
And putting it on the tax rolls.
It's an historic building, and a lot of people in the community, you know, like that building, so I definitely want to see it be preserved for as many years to come and stay a viable part of our downtown.
I agree.
So that's our, I would believe that's our council goal as well, so thank you for doing all the work you have so far, and hopefully we'll get it done in time, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for the City Manager? Okay, 502025, Mr. Bayakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to submit an application to the Stanton K-9 Foundation for the Purchase of a Police K-9.
Second to die, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns?
I'd just like to make a statement, and I think the Chief would back me up on it all. Our whole K-9 program's pretty much all funded by donations, correct, Chief?
Yeah, City Council only puts forward nine hundred and fifty dollars toward supplies every annually, but the K-9 fund is funded one hundred, okay, ninety-nine point nine percent by donations from the program.
People love the dog.
He's a good dog.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, just trying to get that out there. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything, a few dollars. It's a, people don't believe it, but it's true.
Very, very good program, and it's been very worthwhile, and the chief's leadership has brought it back to the city, and I'd like to see it continue.
Does it, the donations, they don't cover the training, right? They just cover the maintenance and the purchase of the dog.
Correct, maintenance, purchase of the dog, any, you know, supplies that are needed, you know, leashes, those type of things. The initial training was actually donated to us by the county of Monroe. So our officer has to attend a monthly training just to keep up his skills, but there's no cost for that either.
Cool. Good enough. All right, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 51 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit an application to New York State District Year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the Purchase of Police Vehicles.
Second to die, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 52 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to create a position of Public Works Supervisor and to direct the City Manager to amend the FY 2526 budget.
Second to die, Mr. Twichell. So just to refresh everyone's memory, it doesn't really say that in the resolution, but this is a training thing, so we can promote somebody early, so they have a reasonable period of time to work with present supervisors, so that they can learn and not just be thrust into it, you know, by themselves with no mentorship or anything. So this has worked really well in the past with the police department, where we're doing something similar with a detective position, and we've tried it, and now it's expanding to other departments, so it's a, it's a good thing, and we end up getting people more up to speed by the time they're ready to go on the road. They're not kind of stuck in that year of trying to learn the job. So I think it's a really good program that we started, so good job on that. Any questions or concerns on it? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 53 2025, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to reclassify two Clerk Typus positions to discovery clerk and to amend the 2526 budget.
Second to die, Mr. Vili. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 54 2025, Mr. Twichell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to introduce and schedule a public hearing for Local Law Number Four of 2025, remending the Section 22 residency for municipal employees of the Batavia Municipal Code.
Second to die, Mr. Bayakowski. Questions or concerns? I have a question, Chief. Both Chiefs, any feedback? Have you got any feedback on it? I mean, I know we're kind of a unique situation with the fire department, and how is that being received, or?
I mean, the current firefighters are totally in favor of keeping it the way it is, just because of our response model. It'd be fantastic to be able to open it up, but it's just not feasible.
And how's the police department responding?
Say, our officers are aware of the impending change, and they're excited for that.
Can any Public Works or anyone, there's no other, other than, is there any other residency requirements in any of the other departments that are aware, other than the City Manager and the, I think it would be it, I guess?
Nope, I don't think we've received any feedback, except for positives from Public Works. There was one gentleman who's wanted to apply here for a long time, and hearing that we had this residency waiver, he only lives thirty-one minutes away, but was outside the district, so now he can apply. So that was the on-the-ground feedback.
That's one of the reasons why we're doing this, so we have a larger pool of candidates, right? Okay, just, just was curious. Anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Resolution 55 2025, Mr. Twichell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with Keeler Construction for construction services for the Bank Street and Alba Place Streetscape Enhancement Project.
Second to die, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Resolution 56 2025, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution establishing the City of Batavia as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act of Seeker, and issuing a negative declaration for the Williams Park Revitalization Project.
Second to die, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 57 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to submit an application for the New York State Division of Parks Recreation and Destroying Preservation Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Funding.
Second to die, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concern? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 58 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve a linear license agreement with Genesee and Mohawk Valley Railroad Company, Inc.
Second to die, Mr. Vili. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
And Resolution fifty-nine twenty-two five, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve a crossing license agreement with the Genesee and Mohawk Valley Railroad Company, Inc.
Second to die, Ms. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
And take this into executive session, Mr. Beely.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas Article Seven, Section One oh five, one-half of the public officers law permits the legislative body of this valley to enter executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, employment history of particular persons in preparation and matters leading to appointment, employment, demotion, disqualification, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular persons in preparation. Whereas Article Seven, Section One oh five, one-eighth of the public officers law permits the legislative body of this valley to enter executive session to discuss those acquisitions, sale, or lease, and real property disposals of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body but only with publicity which substantially affect the value therefore thereof. Now therefore being resolved by the council of City of Batavia, and upon approval of this motion, the City Council is hereby enter into executive session.
Second to die, Schmidt? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.